Is it Akita? No. I'm sorry, as soon as she said, I lost it.
Okay, we ready? Call to order, the Monday, October 6th, 2014, meeting and public hearing of the Planning Commission of Falls Church. Would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Ms. Teats?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I so move.
Second.
Move and second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in this audience who would like to speak on issues other than we have on our agenda? If so, please come forward now. Seeing none, we're going to move on to all business, which we have none, and then on to new business. And our first order of new business is a site plan for the Kensington at 700 West Broad Street. We're going to hold a public hearing and consider final approval of the site plan. And we have, this is, I'm assuming, the latest, which is...
Well, that's going, Madam Chair, that's going to be an addition. You have sheet 0401, and this is going to be an addition. We asked them to produce from Oak to North Lee and the sidewalk, so you can get a better view of how this is going to connect.
Okay, and this is something that we discussed at our work session the other night.
Yes, yes. You had a version of that.
So this is something we are familiar with, it's just, it's on paper now, okay.
Right. This is going to be part of the site plan.
Okay. Do you want to do a staff presentation first, or shall we go on to Mr. Novak?
Your call.
Why don't we have Mr. Novak start out?
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, thank you. It's been quite a path to get here, but we're here. I'm going to go through, the architectural design changes very quickly. You've seen, many of these, many of you have seen these before, but just to clarify, so we are a five-story building, ground floor retail, four stories of assisted living above. The Broad Street elevation, and just to point out, the, there are multiple types of brick patterns here that were modified as a result of the Architectural Advisory Board and other comments that we got back from staff and the various boards and commissions. This is the North Lee Street elevation previously, minor changes to just refine that, and this is in your package as the revised elevation. The Hilton, from the west side of the property, the Hilton elevation, this is the previous. With respect to the new elevation, you'll notice that, and I'll go back to the old one, we had a roof structure here, and the brick pattern was the same with, oops, with the new one. We now have exterior balcony here on that floor, and these wings are identi, are similar in brick pattern.
Just call it.
With respect to the north elevation, this was the original one that was originally submitted. This created frankly the most discussion. It was revised to all brick to match the pattern around the rest of the building, and then was further revised to include a more squared-off look and the balcony above. We have, and we have with us Antoinette from Walter Phillips. We have a layout, blown-up layout plan, the alternative bus stop is now no longer an alternative, that is what we're doing, the bus stop, and a landscape plan, and a Broad Street streetscape. We can, if you have any specific questions, these are again all consistent with what you have in your packages, if you have any questions at all, we're happy to answer those, but staff discouraged me from having a one-hour presentation. So I think I've kept within my allowed time.
Very good, very excellent presentation.
And we'd like to open it up to questions.
Okay. Before we do that, I'd like to hear from the public in case they have any questions that we need to address. We have one public speaker slip, and, oh, is that, is it okay with your computer there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Our first speaker is Mr. Ira Kaelin.
Since I started, I had to do it the end of it.
Okay, that's fine with me. So are there any questions from commissioners? Andy, Mr. John?
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Novak. The tree, the planters that you have in front, are those the ones with the bullnose around them?
Yes, we've, we've been requested to modify the design to include a bullnose around those, so they will be planters with a bullnose.
Okay. Yeah, I saw a letter from...
Tree Commission.
Tree Commission, yeah, about that, so, okay, thank you.
Correct.
Andy?
When did that change? Or, this isn't necessarily a question for you, but I saw that letter too, but I had some questions about that letter, and I thought we were going to keep the tree pits at grade, and I understand the Tree Commission's concern, but I was hoping they would actually propose an alternative solution instead of just saying, hey, let's just keep doing it the way we've been doing it since 1987. So was it like this on the drawing lot two weeks ago?
So the packages that you have actually that were last submitted show the flush curb, so this was something that we received later after the submission, and it's for discussion to get your opinion, but that, that the Tree Commission wanted the raised curb.
And members of the Commission, this has been a discussion, one of the changes here is that the tree pits are now behind, directly behind the curb line, so that a foot or 18 inches of concrete, which in the earlier Broad Street plans would not be there. It helps to have a wider sidewalk. But the Tree Commission has been requesting, Public Works has been requesting on their behalf, that we retain the bullnose pattern, which looks the same in plan but would look different in profile around these. So we've included it since that is part of the adopted standard in this. Now, it's something for you all to discuss, it hasn't yet been built, but we thought, given that that is still the plan, and that feature is something that the Commission, Tree Commission strongly advocates, that we would suggest that in this, in this case at this time, and that's how the staff report is, is written, that's what we recommend at this time.
Madam Chair.
Could I ask you something about that, as far as, then that will be the same as the Broad Street plan as it is with the raised?
It would be raised as the Broad Street plan is now, but the planters would not be set back a foot or 18 inches from behind the curb as they are in earlier versions. They would be directly behind the curb line, so you would have a wider sidewalk area and not have a, a concrete band between the curb and the planter.
And what went in front of the hotel?
Excuse me?
What, what ended up going in in front of the hotel, what kind?
Hotel is a flush planter, and it is set back, I believe, about a foot or so from behind the curb. There was a lot of discussion there about access, because it's a narrow site, the ability for the fire department with such a narrow site to be able to work that property if they needed to, and the Commission had a lot of discussion about that at that time. We ended up with a flat at-grade planter. It still has the circular ends at either end, and it's not real large, but it does have brick all the way to the back of the curb, so visually these would read very similarly as streetscape on this block. As you know, we are, we have been talking about, need to spend some time working on what updates, if any, would we like to make to our streetscape standards, and one of our planners, Akita, has been working on that and done some initial work on it, and we've been working with Commissioner John about that as well, so we need to have some more discussion and try to work, work that through. But at this point in time, we have heard specifically from the Tree Commission about this. So it's advisory to you and the council, and we, we thought we should bring that forward as something to be proposed in this case at this time.
Andy, do you have another question?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think it's a bad idea, and I, I wish the Tree Commission had, I don't know, done some research and figured out how other jurisdictions do at-grade tree pits with trees that live and seem to thrive. I've seen those around. I know we have a little more space here than at the hotel and other places, but as someone who pushes kids around in strollers and knows people that do the same, even a couple inches here and there are an issue. I mean, just this weekend, I was out in front of Dogwood Tavern and everything down at that end of the street, and with the outdoor seating, it's like you can barely get by one stroller, much less somebody walking towards you, and if those tree pits were at grade, you could, you know, scoot over a little bit and get through. So I personally would like to come up with a solution that works at grade, it clearly can be done, and I think that's what we should do, instead of putting these raised-up things.
Just from the point of construction, this can be built either way. Of course, it hasn't been built yet, so it's a detail that can be worked out one way or another. At this point though, I wanted to make sure the Tree Commission's concerns were on record.
Mr. Snyder, is this something that's a policy decision that, that would, we would have to change some language somewhere if we wanted to do the flush, the flush...
Well, I don't know that you'd necessarily have to change the policy per se, but it is a design detail that was in the original Broad Street streetscapes, as was the utility strip, which now that we've pushed the, the buildings back another five feet, and we're paying more attention to try to have clear walking way and include room for pedestrian amenities such as bike, bike racks and bus shelters, things that pedestrians use, I think it's certainly appropriate to fine-tune some of the details. We certainly want to leave the best of the Broad Street streetscape intact, but there is room for some, some minor changes, I think. We probably should have that discussion with some of the other Commissions as, who feel strongly, as the Tree Commission does about this.
One of the things that I noticed in the staff report was that it said the alternative design has a flush sidewalk design. This design approach will add up to an additional 24 inches of sidewalk width, so that's two more feet of sidewalk width. I mean, that's, that's a considerable amount.
We would be getting the, what was formerly the utility strip, because the planters will be pushed to the back of the existing curb. So the question then is, the bricks are typically eight inches each, so that's about 16 inches, that you would not be able to walk on because they would be raised. So there is, I'd say it's about a 16-inch difference, although on the curb side, not many people are going to be walking on the curb side, so I'd say it's more like an eight-inch difference to the pedestrian.
Right. Any further comments?
Can, do we, do we have to decide this now? I'd like to go see what's at the hotel, because I don't have a mental image of that.
You certainly, in your motion, can, you know, provide, I think, flexibility. The design, in terms of the plan, will not change the question of that design detail, and it can be either built with the curb or without the curb. The placement of the planters would be the same, simply a question of whether the course surrounding the planters would be raised or flush.
So the one on the far left is flush?
That's correct. And it is also set back about a foot behind the curb line.
Okay, so, okay.
We also have been trying to widen the sidewalk here to get a full, to get an 11-foot lane, trying to take some of the excess width out of Broad Street, so we're, we're just trying to get as much sidewalk as we can.
Melissa, do you want to ask a question?
Yeah. I did have one question, and mostly it's about the motion that the staff put together for approval, which said that, you know, it's, you're going to, subject to the previously approved special exception and related voluntary proffered conditions, and contingent upon staff administrative review. And normally, when we have something like that that says contingent upon staff administrative review, we have a specific set of issues that are still out there, and I just wonder, are you actually, is those, is that based on page five of the staff report? And I guess five and six are things in italics, like including this issue, how the, you know, the brick is going to be done. And so are those the three staff issues that would be weight, that still would need decisions on?
Well, we're recommending what's in the italics at this point, and of course, the Commission can agree or not agree with those. There is always, as these plans get developed, need for minor tweaks. Sometimes there's a labeling issue, for example, we found in one of the earl, the more recent labeling, that, you know, the irrigation controllers were not labeled correctly. So part of that administrative review is to make sure that those kinds of things get fixed. But these, these types of things we'd be looking for, as you suggest, in the final plan, the ones that are called out here in the, in the report.
So you really just want to leave it open to any minor issues that come up, so we don't have to come back?
And, and certainly if there's anything major, we, you know, we would, you know, we're not looking at major changes, but there may be, you know, maybe a curb return is slightly different, or a radius is slightly different, catch base and moves a few inches.
Well, I did notice that all the issues that were brought up, that were asked of the applicant, were answered. The Walter Phillips letter had every single issue answered to our satisfaction, so I'm just wondering what, what issues might come up, or are these things you really don't know?
We don't really anticipate any. I think this site plan is, has been worked over very, very thoroughly by the applicant, their engineers, and Mr. Bruce, and working with other staff in the city. So I think it's in very good shape. Don't anticipate any problems, so I think we're, I think we're in very good shape at this point.
Okay, great. Ms. Hockenberry?
And I think also, your work session that you had was very helpful, so we, we hope to keep doing that.
It was helpful to us, too, yeah.
No, I thought that work session was very good, and we got all the changes, and we had the great discussion on the bus, yeah, bell shelter. I see also that under this, there's going to be an agreement for maintenance of streetscape by the developer.
That's correct.
And I would just like to point out that I am very, very much in favor of this, considering the lack of staff that we have to put on the projects, and I know there were some great concerns with a reserve at Tenner Hill and the Harris Teeter project, and I know that those concerns came mostly from the Tree Commission, of which I'm liaison. And I just wanted to bring up a situation at the Broadway, that there are some parts of the streetscape that the homeowners have jurisdiction over and others that don't, and the ones that they don't have jurisdiction, there's weeds all over the place. So I really think that this is something we should incorporate and even retro, get some agreements, so that things are taken care of properly, because we just don't have the staff anymore to take care of the streetscape.
Thank you, Lyndy. I'll, I'll now open this up to the public, and Mr. Kaelin, did you want to speak now?
You probably are well aware of my objections to this project from other floors, I won't go over the details that are more pertinent to that floor. There was, there are a couple issues that I'd like to raise in the reading of the staff report. One of them was that there is now an estimate that the building's square footage will be over 85,000 square feet. That information was not available when the city, the council took its vote. As a result, the developers estimate that the cost of the project would be $18 million in terms of construction costs, which in turn led to the financial arrangements, was basically a leap of faith, which four members of the council agreed to, though others had asked to have an independent analysis of how much the cost of the building was going to be, because that was going to determine payments for the next 20 years. Now we do have the number, and I'd like to suggest, since there are some issues regarding delays here, that the city have an opportunity to go back and see if 85,000 square feet really relates to an $18 million building, to make sure that the city is actually getting what it is due. A very brief read of the city's financial situation would tell you, we're not in conditions to be letting money through our hands if we have a legitimate claim to get. So I'd like to recommend that there be a delay to reevaluate the financial status. For the record, for the record, I think the, my calculations, my analysis of the financial packages, even at the way they've done it, were getting taken to the cleaners. I've already made that clear, I've already expressed why this is not good in terms of the financial arrangement for the city, but I know that's not your area, so I won't go into that here. Finally, just another observation, the traffic demand management approach, I believe, will fail, because it is basically relying on good behavior and human, human interaction and human behavior such that volunteerism and goodwill will only take you so far, and the streets will be overflowing with traffic in a very short amount of time. Moreover, given the business model that is currently used in businesses of this nature, or not just assisted living, but in others, this project probably will be sold as soon as this financial stability is established, three to four years it'll be sold, and then you, good luck trying to get the new owners to enforce these, this traffic demand management plan. There is no chance that the new owners will feel any obligation to follow it. That's the way this is done. Thank you very much for your time. I did recommend that it be delayed for these things to be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaelin. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay. Oh, sorry.
This is on the Mesa Road, right?
No, no, it's not up yet. If you, take your slips up. This is on the Kensington. I think there's a procedure problem here with what Mr. Kaelin is requesting that we do, in that this is specifically about this site plan, and I don't see how the, we can kick it back to the City Council to, to do something to, to their second reading. Mr. Snyder or Mr. Bruce?
I think, you know, the, the special exception has been decided, this is the administrative part of, of process approving the site plan itself. We certainly, Mr. Kaelin's remarks are on the record, and we certainly can pass those on to the city manager and director of economic development, but in terms of the Commission's action, what you have before you is the site plan itself, and the other items, the special exceptions, have already been decided.
Right. I understand the concerns, Mr. Kaelin's concerns.
Chair Rogers, would I be able to respond?
Yes, please.
I'm not quite sure what Mr. Kaelin's referring to. This project has not changed significantly at all architecturally in terms of size or anything since it was submitted and approved by the City Council. This has always been, I believe, we were never asked to provide a precise number, but this has always been represented by me with anybody that asked, as a roughly 85,000 square foot building. It has not changed one square foot, or certainly not 5,000 square feet. There were refinements to the retail space, there were refinements to other things, but essentially this has always been within a few percent, the, the building that you see.
Okay, well, I, I think that, I mean, it's my reading on this, and with advice from staff, that we have to proceed with what is under our jurisdiction, which is the site plan, so we should move ahead with that.
Madam Chair, I would encourage you, if you can, you should have received the separate sheet labeled C-0402, and perhaps your motion needs to say that that is part of the site plan now. I mean, yeah, that, that will be part of the site plan.
The bus stop.
The bus stop?
Yeah.
Yes, the streetscape of the entire block, you know, the, the rendering, the exhibit that, that we asked them to put in the plan.
It is a sheet C dash 0402.
Oh, I see it down here in the bottom. Mr. Rankin? Andy? Okay. Are there any further questions from the Planning Commission? Rob?
No, except, I'd like to defer on this bullnose flush street...
Right.
...tree thing, whatever we're calling it. You know what I mean?
Streetscape.
Streetscape. Well, the...
Well, you have, you have to, you have to say specifically how you want to handle that, like...
Can we, can we not handle it? Can we defer it?
Well, you'd have to take it out of the...
I think you could, you could approve the site plan and ask to have some time to provide further guidance on the treatment of the planters, either flush or the bullnose.
Okay.
The plan itself, as it...
So we can, we can make that as an amendment to the motion, or...
I think we can make an addition to the main...
What is it, Mr. Bruce? Did you want to say something?
Okay. Andy's trying to...
Madam Chair, I've asked Antoinette to speak, because it's my understanding that, my read, that there's no, nothing in the plan that specifically states that it has to be raised, you know, the planters, so...
The current plans actually show them flush, since that's how we process them.
Well, that was what we thought, that's why this was a surprise to us tonight.
So everything is shown as flush?
Okay. The, the problem is, if we don't mention it, we'll never know what's going to happen. So it would be...
Or it will be different than as pictured.
Yes, so I, I think that since...
Which is probably more annoying.
It seems that a, a majority or the consensus of the Planning Commission is to at least mention it so that you know that that's what we're intending, and if staff and the Tree Commission want to push it to something else, then I think that they should at least ask us.
We really raised it to the Commission, because it has been something that's been talked about here. We did have the letter. You certainly, you're welcome to, you know, take a poll among yourselves in terms of how you'd like to treat it, but I, I felt I needed to bring it to the Commission's attention.
We rarely go against our Tree Commission's recommendations, very rarely.
I remember the discussion with the Hilton Garden Inn about it being flush, but I don't have a mental image of what it looks like to be flush, so I feel like we need, I, I need to take a field trip to see what the one that's 70 feet away looks like before I could, I mean, I, if you need an opinion, I can give you an opinion. If you want a sort of an informed opinion, you're going to have to let me go there.
Totally at your discretion.
I think we can also just put, ask the Tree Commission and the Public Works staff to relook at it and come up, see if there's more than one option, you know, because I understand that they want to protect the trees, so maybe there's some other options that we could look at.
And I would add, as the applicant, we will agree to conform to whatever the...
Right, we understand.
And, and as long as it's somewhat before we have to build it.
This is an internal fight between the Planning Commission and the Tree Commission.
Yeah.
Okay, so, thank you. Andy?
I move that the City of Falls Church Planning Commission approve site plan number 2013-0627, including sheet C dash 0402, site plan, oh, sorry, site plan number 2013-0627, site plan drawings dated October 1st, 2014, as presented to the Planning Commission, including sheet C dash 0402, subject to the previously approved special exception T... exception T-oh-one-three-dash-two-one, and related voluntary proffered conditions, and contingent upon staff administrative review and approval of the platting labeling, minor corrections as noted in the staff report, with the exception of the bullnose brick course around the tree planting areas, which will be determined at a future time.
Yeah, very nice. And I'll second it. Okay. It's been moved and seconded, what Andy said in his motion. And I'm not going to go over every word of it, but it is to approve Site Plan Two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-zero-six-two-seven, with, with the new drawings that came to us today. So would you please call the roll? Akita.
Mr. John?
Approved.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries. We are now going to move on to Second Order of New Business, comprehen, what?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to leave, but if you have any documents that you don't want to keep, I'll be glad to take them off your hands, because it's a lot of paper, and we can recycle that and reuse it. And then if you haven't filled out the survey on how you want future plans presented, we would appreciate you filling that out and giving it to Akita.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. Why don't we just make a show up? I hope I do. We'll wait until Mr. Fuller gets into position.
They shouldn't call them right at the last meeting, stuff like that. Then I get to go separate meeting.
I just for this one here. We can do that after this meeting, can't we?
Okay, we'll move on to C. You want this PowerPoint or the PDF?
PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
All right, we're going to move on to Comprehensive Plan, Map Amendment TR fourteen-dash-twenty-nine.
Oh, I don't have a.
Official zoning map amendment TO fourteen-dash-twenty-eight.
Let me open the.
And special exception, TR fourteen-dash-twenty-eight, as requested as part of the proposed Broad and West or Mason Row mixed-use project application. We're going to hold a public hearing and comment period, and then consider disposition with the staff recommending continuance until we get further materials on this. So, Mr. Fuller, did you want to start?
Yes, I'll start with a little background on this project. This is advertised public hearing. We've sent out property owner letters to adjacent property owners within one hundred and fifty feet. It's been advertised in the news press for two consecutive weeks, and the property's been posted, which are all legal requirements. The applicant is Spectrum Development Company. They're consolidating approximately eleven parcels totaling almost four acres to build a mixed-use project, which is currently named Mason Row. Previously was referred to as Broad and West. The request is for a five-story hotel with one hundred and fifty rooms, five-story multifamily rental apartment building with two hundred and fifty-three units, above first-floor commercial retail space, and that's totaling about forty-nine thousand square feet, and a five-story condominium project down on Park Avenue side with sixty-seven units. Proposed building heights are generally six stories throughout the project, except for the five-story condominiums, and that's basically first-floor commercial with hotel or residential apartments from the second to sixth floor. So those uses are five stories in effect on top of the commercial. The site also is proposing a parking garage underground, surface parking that's partially enclosed at the grade level, and then overall, this project has land use ratio in terms of commercial at twenty-five percent approximately, and seventy-five percent residential. The land use and zoning actions that are required with this application, there's four of those. First is the comprehensive plan amendment, and that's from business and low-density residential to mixed use. Secondly, there's a rezoning, which is a zoning map amendment, and that's from existing B-three, R-one-B, and there's some B-one, to all B-one. Thirdly, it's a special exception for residential development within a mixed-use development in a commercial-zoned area. And lastly, special exception for a thirty-foot height bonus, and proposed heights are at maximum of eighty-five feet. The applicant submitted the initial development plans in February, and revised application in early July, and on August eleventh, the city council gave first reading of the application and referred it to city board and commissions and community organizations. Subsequently, the applicant submitted a second revised conceptual plan on August twenty-eighth, and this was the Mason Row concept, which was a reconfiguration of the uses on the site, and a more emphasis on a commercial shopping aspects of the project, including a revised conceptual plan and architectural drawings, and a traffic study that evaluated the, the new configuration. The Mason Row concept was presented also at an open house by the planning commission for board and commissions, and that was on September fifteenth. The planning commission then held their own work session on this item later that evening with the applicant. So tonight, staff is recommending that the planning commission hold an advertised public hearing, receive public comment, discuss the merits of the application, and provide guidance to the applicant on the revisions, and then formally continue the public hearing, final action, and your mandatory recommendation to the council on the application to a date certain, and, and that is November seventeenth, is recommended by staff. Tonight, staff would also encourage the planning commission to provide any guidance and comments on the current application to the city council. As part of the board and commission referral, you are the mandatory group that makes recommendations for them, and so staff is suggesting you provide some interim guidance, because no formal action is being taken tonight, and that also prevents the council from taking any formal action, because yours is a mandatory recommendation.
Is that something that has to be written?
It, it can be in the motion tonight, and that.
I, I don't see how we can, can do that, because it seems to me there, there are too many comments that would be made. I mean, we'd have a two-page motion, and, and there's too many unknowns, and.
Sure.
And so, I mean, you can take our comments from, that we're, we're saying, but I, I don't see how.
Yeah.
We can put it in the motion.
That's, I mean, that's, that's at your discretion tonight. In, in the proposed motion for the continuance, we did outline seven items that we thought were broad objectives, that might be of use to you, if you were to want to use those seven. I'm going to highlight those right now, just to give you a little background on them. And the first one was that the proposed multifamily residential condominium uses on Park Avenue are too dense, the building height too tall, and the residential traffic entrance and exit located on Park Avenue impacts the neighborhood, and it's too substantial, and we don't believe it's compatible with the comprehensive plan, number one. Two, that the applicant needs to further explore options to reduce the overall density of the project. Three, the street scape widths on Northwest Street reduce the overall ability of having a free and clear space on the sidewalk for pedestrians, and that the outdoor dining concepts depicted aren't as feasible. Fourthly, that they need to justify the parking reductions by type of use and how the parking spaces will be managed effectively, we need a full picture on that. Fifth, the W O N D trail connections, linkages, and retail establishments fronting on West Broad Street should, you know, draw from that major bicycle and pedestrian arterial and transportation and recreation facilities associated with it. Sixthly, that lead silver should be considered for the hotel and the voluntary concessions. And lastly, that the city council, board, commission, community, public staff comments that included in the staff report should be carefully considered and responded to as appropriate by the applicant. So those were some specific and a couple broad recommendations that you, you may want to consider. Otherwise, you know, we are continuing this, and we anticipate seeing a new plan when it comes back to you on November seventeenth, so you'll have the opportunity to formally comment on it at that time. So that's my staff report for this evening. I will highlight that the staff comments are summarized in pages twenty-one through thirty-one of the report. The board and commission comments that we've received to date were packaged for you in their entirety, and those are attachments fifteen through twenty-seven, and the public comments are provided and grouped in attachment twenty-eight, and you received those in your package last week as background. So once again, the recommendation is to continue this item, that the planning commission hold its advertised public hearing and continue the resolutions as cited in the ordinance until November seventeenth, and for final consideration and recommendation to the city council on the current application, as we know that these plans are not in final form in, in front of you this evening. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Fuller before we proceed with the applicants? Okay.
I don't know that I know what we're trying, so are you saying, statutorily, that may not be the right word, that we need to give guidance to the city council prior to November seventeenth?
Not technically. What, what I'm saying is, statutory-wise, the, the council will wait for your formal action on this to take any final action themselves on it. In the interim, they are going to receive all the public and board and commission comments this Wednesday, and they're going to take those and provide guidance to the applicant, who will then revise the plans, resubmit those in late October. We will then review, comment, technically look over those, provide a full staff report for you for November seventeenth, and you'll see some revised plans at that time, and they'll, they'll be in final form for your formal action. So in the meantime, if you wanted to, let's say, parlay with the board and commission comments that have already gone out to the council, and be part of that board and commission review as a commission, then you're welcome to add any guidance on an informal basis that we would be happy to communicate, if there was some important items that you wanted to make sure that the council is considering and giving their guidance out of their work session this Wednesday.
Well, and so I don't know what's ahead of us here this evening. My question really is what we can accomplish, because from our last work session, what I think has happened is that all of our previous guidance is still in flux, or has or has not been acted upon.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, what, what's happening tonight is, we're going to have a public hearing, the public's going to provide additional comments, and then at that point, you can, you're going to get a very brief update from the developer. He's also has a very short presentation available just for the public, if, if need be, and then at that point, we're looking for you to formally continue this to November seventeenth, because we'll be getting different plans for you to look at.
Just a minute, Lyndy.
Will we have a work session on this before the seventeenth?
You will, the, the process right now, in the, in the timeline, they will resubmit plans this month. We will send them out for staff review immediately, and then they will do a presentation on November third to both you and the council in a joint session of the new version. And then from there, the staff will finish up its review in the, the days after that, and we'll have a staff report prepared for your November seventeenth meeting.
I, with a project this big, I don't, I think, it's my opinion, we'd need a work session somewhere in there.
Well, we, we need, we need to at least see plans that we're going to go forward. I mean, what we're seeing now is, yeah, it's just conceptual, and so it's kind of hard to comment when you don't know.
What changes?
What changes are going to be.
Sure, I understand, and, and you'll get a set of plans for the November third work session, and then after that, if we want to schedule a work session prior to the seventeenth, that would be possible. So, yeah.
Well, the November third should, should work, and then.
I mean, that'll, that'll, you'll get a presentation and get the plans, and then from there, we can decide as to what disposition you would like to have of those plans, interim work session prior to the seventeenth, so forth.
It's still really, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I just still feel uncomfortable with this idea of telling the council anything at this point, you know, just the fact that we are going forward with, you know, we will continue the public hearing, because there really isn't anything that we can coalesce to, to deal with at this point. And so I don't feel comfortable with that at all. And then if we don't, then we're seen as not participating or something, but I just don't feel comfortable with that at all.
Well, I mean, I mean, in terms of commenting on that, I mean, tonight, you're continuing this item, and so that's really, it's a deferment, because we don't have final plans in front of us to act on, it's that simple, they'll understand that.
And, and we'll, we'll, any questions that we ask of the developer would be things that we'd be concerned about.
Okay.
And if they're not answered to our satisfaction, then we can put that in any kind of a, a guidance that we send to the city council, but not necessarily tonight.
Absolutely not tonight, I can't see that happening.
Mr. John?
I'd just like to say that I would recommend a meeting before we meet with the city council, because typically, the work sessions with a city council doesn't really yield, you know, well, you know what I mean. So I would rather us have a planning commission work session first, before we meet with the city council.
Well, I think that's doable, I mean, our next, our next meeting is with the, about Mount Daniel, and there are, there's plenty of weeks in October that we, we should, we might be able to fit something in. I'm not going to swear to it, but. Andy or Russ or Melissa, do you have anything before we move on to the presentation?
I would just say, I'm comfortable with, with the way we're going to handle this, I don't see any other option other than deferring it at this point, since we don't have finalized plans. So I want to hear the public's comments and incorporate that, that into our recommendation, if we can.
I think that's a good idea. Okay. Do you all have a, a presentation, PowerPoint?
Well, we have the existing presentation that you've seen.
Mm-hmm.
Am I on here? Can you hear me? There we go. We have the existing presentation that you've seen. We got staff's report Friday afternoon.
Okay.
And we got our team together over the weekend, and we've been going through those comments and, and discussing potential solutions. We hope to be getting guidance from city council on Wednesday, and then our team's going to go full board on drawings and working on some of the solutions for the comments and, and concerns that have been expressed about the project.
Okay, well, do you have any objection to us then, having the public go before, go now, and then if they need, and you can speak afterwards if you, if you'd like to address some of their comments?
Sure, that'd be fine. That's fine.
Well, let me just say, and, and this is not meant as a political statement, you know, we had what I thought was a good work session, and it's, you know, although you didn't. we had what I thought was a good work session, and it's, you know, although you didn't have the staff comments, I think you had our comments, which were fairly... I mean, as I'm looking at these list of seven items, you know, at least for myself, I think we were 75% of this. So I don't think anything really should have come as a blind side to you. And I understand... I mean, I don't actually understand and am sort of not really at all clear why you would wait to meet with the city council or wait to hear the staff report, because I think what you heard from us is reflected here. I don't think there's a mystery to it. I mean, if there is, if we're not communicating, if there's something that we're not sort of being clear on, I think that... I'm not sure how we would be clearer, but I'm not... I don't know what magic the city council meeting has.
Yeah.
And again, that's... I don't mean that as a besmirching of the city council, but I think we've sort of been clear up to this point. My suspicion is we're going to hear public comments, which are going to echo, by and large, these seven items. So I don't know that there's... I think it ought to be crystal clear at this point, sort of where we are.
It is. We were... It was recommended to us by staff that we allow city council to provide guidance before we go in full-blown with final revised drawings. And so we were holding back for that report and then waiting for Wednesday's meeting. That's kind of how we got to this. But you're correct. We're very, very familiar with the comments that are in the report. They're right on target with what we discussed with you all the last time that we met. We've been having meetings with the community, different neighborhoods, getting further contacts to the comments and suggestions that are at large. And what we're trying to do now is to gather these comments and try to target the priorities, and, you know, you can't do everything. So we're really trying to figure out from the community, from council, from planning commission, and the other boards and commissions, what's really important here, and then for us to go work very hard to try to solve those concerns. And we have some ideas in the works and underway so far. We expect to start drawing after Wednesday's meeting.
Okay. That's fair.
So is it my understanding, then, when we continue this, that this will be our... With these seven items listed here, that those will be our recommendations then?
No.
No. But just...
I mean, unless we want to put that in the motion. These are just recommendations from staff.
Yeah, right. Okay.
I mean, I would think this is a minimum of our recommendations, not a complete list.
I think it's a minimum of our recommendations, but it's... But some of these, you know, hit to the larger... The, you know, the larger topics.
The big issues.
Yeah, the big issues.
Well, I think the downside of using them in the... In our motion is that it might be understood that these were our only concerns, and I would hate to forward that that way.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead then with public comment. And we've got plenty of speaker slips, and I'd like to say at the beginning, before I start calling names, is three minutes, and there are a lot of people here, so we'd like to hold you to that as close as possible. I mean, I'm not going to arbitrarily cut you off in mid-sentence, but please be considerate of other people who are going to be speaking after you, and keep your comments to three minutes. Also, when you come up, speak your name and your address into the microphone so that we have that on record. So we will proceed with the first speaker slip with his, James Morrison.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me appear here tonight. My name is James Morrison. I live at 1012 Steeple's Court in Falls Church City, and I'm here on behalf of the Steeple's Court Homeowners Association. Steeple's Court crosses or meets West Street diagonally, about 100 yards roughly, maybe less than that, from the Mason Row project. We have 10 families that are affected, nine in row homes and one in a single-family home. We have three concerns, and I think I mentioned this to some of the members of the planning committee at your previous meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate those concerns so that they are actively considered. The first is traffic, the second is safety, and the third is stormwater. I guess, actually, I should go a little bit out of order, because safety is probably the most important concern from a public safety and health of the community consideration type way of thinking about it. The bike path which crosses west right by there, by the site of the project, is very crowded, and with each passing month, it gets more crowded with more pedestrians and more bicyclists using it. And that's a great thing, except that we've got a lot of cars trying to cross there at the same time. Those of us who live in the neighborhood have seen and have witnessed and have heard about many different close calls between the cars and the bicyclists and the pedestrians. The line of sights, the lines of sight are not good, and the angles that the intersections occur are not really great. And I think this is an opportunity to try to correct that, not only because it needs doing right now before there's a serious injury or fatality, but also because with this project, which is attempting to attract more people who will use the bike path, it's just going to get more intense. There'll also be more cars because of this project, and so that aspect of it is going to get more intense. It really should be addressed as a part of this project, and I noticed in the report that you just heard that the connections between the project and the W N O D trail are part of what the planning commission is looking at. So please do look at this. Please be sure that this safety problem is addressed. The second thing is a particular problem of ours, which is that traffic already blocks Steeple's Court at rush hours because of the number of cars that are going down West Street. If you add more cars to that, our street is going to be blocked more often and for longer periods of time. So we would really like to see some kind of a traffic consideration there, whether it's a light or some way that the pavement is painting, painted, or some signage that gets people to understand that there are cars that need to get in and out of that street and to respect that. And then the final thing, the third thing, is the sewage issue. As I mentioned at the last meeting, because this has been a long-term concern of ours as well, if you look at a contour map of Falls Church City, you see that from the height of Mount Daniel Hill, which is the highest point, the lowest point is right behind our street, and that's where the water flows. We have a small sewage pipe that goes under the street. It's not large enough to carry that volume of water when there's a heavy rain, and so the water backs up into our yards. Also, for purposes of this project, it's important to note that it floods West Street. Now, when that flooding occurs, and there are three or four cars each way trying to get through, it's a nuisance for those cars and for everyone, but if you start talking about 30 or 40 cars trying to get through, you have a very major traffic problem, because those people will wander around the neighborhood trying to figure out how to get where they're going. We've talked to the city about this problem, and we've been told by the planning department and by Jason Whitstrom and others that this is something the city plans to rectify in five years or so. I think it would be a really good time to do that, when you're going to be redoing West Street anyway, and when you've got this traffic volume issue that's going to increase, we would strongly suggest that you do it then. And the... There's a lot right to the side there that is not presently built upon. You could use that, you could lease that, I'm sure, from the owner and put in whatever equipment you needed there to make that change on West Street.
Mr. Morrison, thank you very much. I've given you two extra minutes, because you represent an organization, so you have five minutes.
Sorry to run over. Thank you for your consideration.
So don't everybody think they're going to get the five minutes?
It goes quicker than you think, the three minutes.
Yes.
Before you know...
And Russ got this little electronic thing that... Just... Our next speaker is Bob Ford.
Bob Ford, 910 Park Avenue. Our concerns, or my concerns, have to do with traffic and parking. And I've basically said this the last time, and it's kind of hard to comment without further idea of what's going on. We're concerned that the highest commercial residential use of the property is going to be on weekends. If you've ever been down Park Avenue on the weekends, you'll find out it's already a parking lot due to the extensive use of the street by the church. And we're concerned that the traffic estimates for the area don't reflect what's going on in the weekends. We wish that, you know, that would be taken in consideration. And if I calculate correctly, the estimates that were given provides one additional car every 90 to 220 seconds down that road. And on the weekend, it's already heavy, and add that to it, we're a little bit concerned. We feel that the parking overflow will go primarily to Park Avenue, you know, from the residential and commercial users of Mason Row. And again, we think that's going to be highest on the use of the site will be in the evenings and on weekends, when a number of the residents are using the street for parking, given that several residents do not have off-street parking. And lastly, I'd like to say, you've ever gone away from home and you have to plan your return trip to when the church is not having services, it would be nice to have consideration given, because we won't be able to predict when there will be parking places in front of our homes. And because we think that the site will be busiest in the evenings and on weekends. Couple of solutions I'd like to propose. One of them is, we don't know what's going to happen if they move that egress and entrance and exit for the residential area to Park Avenue. I think that's going to really compound the traffic and parking issues. So we'd ask that the garage be moved. We'd like to ask that there be restricted parking on the south side of Park Avenue. The comments I made last time weren't reflected correctly. I would like to see that to be two-hour parking between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and midnight to benefit us and the church and traffic flow through the area. And lastly, we'd like to follow a precedent that's been displayed within the city, and that is to have no parking except by permit 24/7 on the north side. And if we can't have it 24/7, we'd at least like to have it from midnight, from 6:00 a.m. in the morning till midnight, and allow unlimited parking between hours of midnight and 6:00. Thank you very much. Oh, yes, many of the residents are in favor of the... Of this project. We just have our concerns, and like those to be reflected.
Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Good evening. Rohini Winters from 324 Grove Avenue. I'm a signatory on the petition. I hope you've received.
Yes, we did receive that.
Thank you. And I would like to say thank you to the staff for your comments to the planning commission. They do reflect a large portion of our concerns. In addition, or in... To emphasize, my personal concern is the height, the density, and the increase of traffic to the neighborhood by this project. I would really, really like you to recommend that the height exception not be approved. I think it negatively impacts the little city and the West End. I would like you to consider traffic calming speed tables on Grove Avenue today, with or without Mason Row. We have a high-speed, high-traffic count on that road. I have small kids. My neighbors have kids, and we have high school traffic as well as cut-through traffic I don't think the traffic study that the developer has proposed adequately reflects what's happening, and I don't think shifting from Grove Avenue to Park Avenue or West Street, from Park Avenue to West Street, would be the right solution for the ingress egress. So I would recommend that you consider ingress and egress onto Broad Street, which is the municipal area, not the neighborhood. I don't think there's anything else I should add that hasn't already been said or will be said.
Thank you very much. Should we mention that the government has to go through the... Yeah, I was going to do that, actually. I understand your concern about the Grove Avenue traffic and money traffic problems, but that... I mean, traffic calming solutions, but that would not be a part of this, what we're considering. You would have to go to the C A C T, the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation to do that. So you can't expect the developer to take care of your projects, I mean, your problems from years ago. This is something that you're going to have to take up with our advisory committee on transportation. So that's just for your information.
I'm sure, thank you. I would ask that there be a do not enter during rush hour to Grove Avenue.
Okay, our next one is Anita Shalit.
I'm Anita Shalit. I live at 202 Grove Avenue, and I would just like to say that I strongly support the petition that was signed by all the residents on Groves, Bruce, and all the other streets on the West End. However, I also want to add that that is really my second choice. My first choice would be... The project is just way too dense. I would really like to... In my dreams, I would like to see no residential in this project and to have it all retail. Frankly, my taxes are incredibly high. I live in a townhouse. Other people that I talk to who live in Bethesda, Washington, D.C., Arlington, incomparable housing, have tax... Real estate taxes that are dramatically lower. I can't imagine that bringing all these residents, additional residents into the city, is going to increase the tax rate, because the burden on the city services is just going to increase as well. What I would like to see is some retail that would be destination retail for people not only in the city, but from other areas in the metro area. I don't know if anybody has ever been to Wildwood Shopping Center, which is on Old Georgetown Road in Bethesda. It has restaurants, clothing shops, eyeglass stores, hair salon. It's all on one level, and there, except for a CVS and a Starbucks, you will not see one of those stores in Tyson's Mall. And the parking lot is always packed. And I think that's the kind of development that we should have, one that enhances the lifestyle of the people who already live here and also brings others into our community to take advantage of those resources and also increase our tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shalit. Next is Lisa Baro...
Baro...
Am I close? Baro...
I'm Lisa Baroaksis. I live at 301 Grove Avenue. I have lived at that address for 31 of the 47 years I've lived in this city, and never before have I felt motivated to speak before any of the boards or the commissions, yet after seeing the proposed development plans for the Broad West Park Grove area, I decided it was time to voice my concerns. I addressed my list of objections with the reasons to support them in an email I sent to both the city council and to the commission, yet I only heard back from Mayor Tartar, so I'm not sure if you all even saw... so I'm not sure if you all even saw the email. I do not, and this, I'm actually speaking for our group, I have three people following directly behind me. So on a final personal note, I would like to stop calling this Mason Row, and we go back to calling it Broad and West until we find a name that fits the city better. For the group, I'm going to say that many of the residents of the West End area, to include residents of Grove Avenue, Jennifer Lane, Chestnut Street, Spruce Street, Falls Avenue, Offutt Street, Birch Street, and Ellison Square, have the same concerns as I, as evidenced by the more than one hundred and twenty-two signatures on the recently circulated petition you have been provided. A neighborhood meeting was held last week with the developers, and council members say also attended. It provided us with an opportunity to present the greatest, the issues of the greatest concern directly to the developers. Tonight, my neighbors have agreed to use their time in front of the commission to address four of the five key issues, and that'll give us more than three minutes to address them. Thanks.
Thank you. And this looks like... Alex, yes, is this, is this your husb-
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, partners.
Would you give us your name and address?
My name is Alex Baropecz, I live at 301 Grove Avenue. I commonly call it the bypass. I'm here speaking about parking and the request for parking reduction. There's a lot of things there that concern me. The amount of residential units, the hotel units, and the retail spaces. By reducing the number of parking units, the people that patronize the West End-Broad Street development will be looking for other options to park. That's going to be on the side streets of Park and Grove. We already have a parking problem on Grove, they have a parking problem on, on Park. One of the biggest concerns I have is the residents will have to either lease or rent, I'm not sure which one, or, or buy a parking space. If I lived there, I would be looking for a free option. A free option would be aside the street. Another concern I have is the construction parking. Where will the workers park their vehicles? It's my understanding from Spectrum that some of the anchors require a set amount of parking, particularly movie theaters. So we're going to run into an issue there where, if we're trying to reduce the number of parking spaces, we're going to have to come back and increase them, some of the anchors. So I think this has to be addressed early on. I know the develop- developers are sitting here nicely, listening to a broken record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one is Arnie, is it Arnie Poli- Polivka?
It's Ann.
Oh, Ann, sorry. Bad Ann, Ann.
My name is Ann Polivka, and I live at 1005 Jennifer Lane, and I'm here to speak about the height of the project. As has been noted, it's a little bit difficult to know what to comment on, but when you are considering the plan, I'd like you to urge you to have the developers propose a more modest project with regard to that which faces the neighborhoods in terms of Grove and Jennifer and West. And specifically, as was indicated on the petition that was signed by more than one hundred and twenty-two people, we would like you to not grant the exception of the thirty feet height bonus. When we look at what the current plans are, what you see is a towering wall in the townhouses that face us. It's not all conducive to my neighborhood feel, it's also not at all inviting to the people who are on the bike path, who are supposed to be a targeted market for the shops inside this. The towering aspect of this project is not mitigated by having a small gathering area within the project, it's not mitigated by a different kind of surface. What I think would help, and what would make it more friendly and more appropriate for our area, is to perhaps have it step down more, to have perhaps some residential units removed and make it really much more commercial. But really what I'm urging you is, when you are considering this project, to please consider the neighborhood around it, and to develop a project that is not towering over our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Beth Ann Heller.
Good evening, my name is Beth Ann Heller, and I live at 200 Grove Avenue with my husband and two sons. The last time I appeared before this body was ten years ago, when the West End community came together to support the preservation of West End Park as an oasis of active and passive recreational use for residents and visitors to our city. I appear before you this evening with similar quality-of-life concerns related to the proposed development project at the intersection of West Street and Broad Street. I am not against development of that location, and actually support better utilization of that space. However, I have concerns specifically related to traffic on Grove Avenue. I am here to request that this commission proactively anticipate and manage these traffic concerns by instituting resident-only access, broadly defined, during rush hour periods. As one of the community members who circulated the petition on the issue of the Mason Row project, I can attest to the fact that cut-through metro traffic anticipated from the development is a critical concern to all signers. Grove Avenue was never intended to be a main thoroughfare. It is a residential street, and we are seeking to maintain it as such to the extent possible. To that end, we propose moving now to limit access to Grove Avenue during morning and evening rush hours to the neighborhood residents of Grove Avenue, including Fairfax County residents, as well as adjacent streets of Jennifer, Chestnut, Spruce, Offutt, Falls, Ellison Square, and Birch in this busy West End neighborhood. A permit-only approach is used throughout the city, and in light of the speed, volume of traffic, and cut-through nature of the current and expected traffic increase from such a high-density project, it should be practiced on Grove Avenue as well. Specifically, we request do-not-enter controls between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, and 4:00 to 7:00 PM weekdays, except for residents. This is a logical and reasonable solution to the Grove Avenue rush hour cut-through problem that currently exists, and which will be exacerbated still further by the size and density of the residential and commercial uses proposed by the development. It prevents Grove from being overwhelmed by cut-through traffic without inhibiting use of a city street during non-rush periods. To do otherwise leaves Grove Avenue stretched beyond its intended use and capacity. Already, there are long lines of traffic lining up into and out of Grove during these hours. Also, as a parent of school-aged children who will walk to MEH and George Mason, I am concerned about the safety issues this traffic volume presents as kids head to and from school during these hours. I urge this commission to take action on this issue now by implementing the community recommendation to implement do-not-enter controls for non-residents as defined in the petition during rush hour periods. Thank you.
The resident acts, access only is something that we don't handle, again, is-
Okay.
It's the, I mean, it could be handled as part of the project, but we couldn't do it before. But I'd like to ask you, what, is, has anyone ever mentioned a traffic signal at that intersection?
Well, I thought there was some-
And do you think that would work?
I think there was some discussion that that would be too close to one of the other proposed stoplights, and that they wouldn't want to have two traffic lights that close together.
Well, yeah, but that's not what I'm asking you. Is that something that the neighborhood is considering asking for?
Uh, we, we didn't talk about it extensively as an option.
Uh, just, it's been mentioned to me, so I, I thought maybe, you know, there was something that the neighbor was, neighborhood was considering, and was falling back on the residence only as a alternative. No, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Pat Myers?
My name is Pat Myers, I live at 115 Buxton Road, and I've been a resident of the city of Falls Church since nineteen eighty-seven. Overall, I want to request city officials to keep in mind what is crucial to the city. Not only do we have excellent school services and citizens, but we have an excellent location and a small one. Our real estate is precious in both senses of the word, expensive and not very much of it. The decisions made by the Planning Commission and the city council are weighty, long-lasting, and significant. I am puzzled by efforts to imitate development nearby, Tyson's, Clarendon, Boston, Reston, and Bethesda, all of which is easily accessible to anyone in the city of Falls Church, as opposed to creating a multi-use project which would not only attract revenue, but enrich the surrounding community. Why do we tout uniqueness and strive for sameness? All dollar bills are identical. But here in the city of Falls Church, I would like to think the bottom line can be more than the bottom line. Anyhow, points. The building is too dense and too high, more setbacks in height are required, the bonus height is undesirable as far as granting that special exception. Setbacks from the street, as shown on West Street, are inadequate. Waivers requested for landscaping buffers should not be granted. The festival space is close to laughable in terms of the small scale and the lack of detail which has been shown. The idea of providing in-and-out traffic to West Street for a 7-Eleven? The disappearance of the original plan's two single-family houses and their replacement with condos with a subjectively labeled so-called dramatic step-down and an entrance to garage parking is not a suitable transition from the single-family homes across the street, and makes the request for zoning change hard to swallow. Loading dock and trash collection access and its effect on traffic and parking is unclear. Traffic increase should be handled by a traffic light, not just at West End Park, but by an additional traffic light at West End Grove. And this would be a minimal, basic requirement, I think, for any of the changes the developers requesting. No parking reduction should be given, the developers cannot possibly justify reduced parking, given the number of unknowns. A multi-use project containing retail of assorted and changing types, a hotel, excuse me, I was trying to figure out how this worked when I was waiting, and obviously I failed.
Are you timing yourself? Is that it?
Anyhow, the developers, in my opinion, cannot possibly justify reduced parking, given the number of unknowns. A multi-use project containing retail of assorted and changing types, a hotel and residential use of great density are prior, are, are, excuse me, characterized by.
Okay, Ms. Myers, you're at your three minutes, and you've gotten a lot of points in, I have to say that.
Oh, can I put one more thing in? The idea of a movie theater, while everyone likes to go to the movies, I think is really unworkable, and movie theater traffic being typified by many cars coming and going many times a day, every day of the week, opens a whole new can of worms. And I've also, I'd also like to add thanks to the staff whose report was extremely thorough and informative, especially Gary Fuller and Akita Ruzi. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Victor Wong.
Good evening, I'm Victor Wong at 914 Park Avenue. Um, I do have comments regarding the height variance on Park Avenue, I think it's a little too high to have an eighty-five-foot resident, um, variance, residential area. But I do have concerns right now, especially with the resolutions and some of the changes, because at the moment, I understand two residences that are supposed to be purchased for this plan actually have the contract lapsed. So how can you change zoning on property that's not, that may not be purchased for this development? Why are you subjecting homeowners to this? And then the question is, what are the developers going to do to try to mitigate and affect the new plans? Because right now, the contract for two of the properties have lapsed, they are not in, I'm sure they're in negotiation, but right now they're not valid. So you have two properties that you want to, in your notice that you want to approve, should not be changed at the moment. So those are my questions, and how can that happen if it's not in effect?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we're continuing this to another-
Okay.
-another date, so it may be resolved by then, we don't know.
It might change, might, might happen, but right now it's like, um, there is no contract for two of those properties.
I mean, that's not the only reason we're doing this.
I know, but I'm just saying, you know, if you were to approve this right now, I'm saying you'd be changing-
But we're not going to approve it.
Right, I know, I'm just saying if.
Okay.
It's one of the ifs, we, everything is an if, and what if?
Well, don't worry about things that aren't going to happen.
I know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Brusou, Brusau? I know I should be able to say your name, you live, you used to live right near me, so it's embarrassing.
I'll take a little different approach. My name is Ronald Brusau, I live at 607 Northwest Street. One of the Planning Commission's main policy jobs is to review site plans to assure consistency with the comprehensive plan. As part of the city vision, the plan indicates, and I quote, "A diverse housing stock will provide opportunities to all income levels and family types." ADUs, affordable dwelling units, are an important tool for complying with the city vision. The Affordable Housing Policy approved by City Council in 2013 calls on developers to provide a minimum six percent ADUs in new development. And, and I quote, "If the city allows greater density, the expectation is that the city will gain an additional percentage of final allowable units." These ADUs, and I quote, "ought to be sold and rented at a price below market to households with incomes of fifty to eighty percent of area median income." In 2014, these income levels had ranged from approximately thirty thousand to fifty-nine thousand for a single individual, and fifty-three thousand to eighty-five thousand for a family of four. Spectrum Development Company, in its August seventh voluntary contributions, community benefits, terms and conditions document proposes to provide nineteen units of ADUs, which it considers meets policy requirements. However, the Spectrum proposal does not meet the affordable housing requirements in four areas. Five of the proposed units do not correspond to affordable units, because they are targeted to a household earning ninety percent. Therefore, these five units cannot be counted. A special exception granted by the city provides a significant increase in density, thirty-five percent. Therefore, the expectation is that the city will gain additional percentage of final, of ADUs. Given the increase in the density, the number of ADUs should be at least twenty-four. Fifty-eight percent of the ADUs for Mason Row are targeted to upper income levels, eighty and ninety percent, according to their proposal. The policy calls for a cross-section of ADUs to meet the needs of households between fifty and eighty. For example, six units at fifty, six units at sixty, six units at seventy, and six units at eighty. All ADU units are rental units. The policy calls for ADUs to mirror, mirror overall development distribution between rentals, condos, and sighs. The Planning Commission, therefore, according to my opinion, should not recommend approval of Georgia, of the Mason Row special exception until Spectrum fully meets the recently approved Affordable Housing Policy requirements on ADUs in a comprehensive vision of a diverse housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Gary Laporta.
Gary Laporta, 130 Chanel Terrace. It's a pleasure to follow Mr. Brusau. I'm here tonight to represent the Chamber of Commerce. The Falls Church Chamber of Commerce has reviewed this project and strongly endorses it. As outlined in our letter of September twenty-third, which is included in your packets, the Chamber feels that the following factors make this an exceptional project that will benefit the city and its residents. Significant financial impact, the capital improvements contribution, the consolidation of properties and unique concept and design, the traffic calming elements, the reduction in curb cuts, the broken-up massing, the surface parking- in curb cuts, the broken-up massing, the surface parking, surface-level retail parking, the critical mass of retail, the project's proximity to the trail, its gateway location, its outdoor gathering space, and its improved stormwater management. While we are concerned about the future of the local businesses that will be displaced, we have been impressed with the developers' willingness to reach out and work with them. The Chamber encourages you to support the comprehensive plan, map amendment, the official zoning map amendment, and the special exception required in order for this project to be built. And on a personal note, I would like to take umbrage to those who feel that renters are freeloaders, as mentioned in many of the blogs in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laporta. Sally Cole.
Good evening. I'm Sally Cole. I'm the executive director of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a resident at 206 Southwest Street. Gary Laporta, you all have our letter. It's in your packets. Gary Laporta addressed some of the issues. Paul Barkley and Ed Novak will address some of the other Chamber issues. I am, as a neighbor, one and a half blocks away from this project. I am really excited about it. My husband is really excited about it. You know, we're kind of lost down at the West End. All the excitement happens down this end of the neighborhood. I have no doubt that it's going to be what -- obviously, it's going to be more walkable. We're going to have much better amenities. We'll do less driving. We won't be taking up any of those parking spots. And the area will be safer. Traffic will be calmed with the traffic light and the fewer curb cuts. And it's going to be -- there's going to be a lot more nighttime activity there, which I think is important. Finally, it's actually going to, I believe, significantly increase our property values. This is not just my perspective. I came across a study done by George Mason, the Center for Regional Analysis, on the impact of mixed-use development projects. And that study found that property values increase and safety or crime decreases. My one concern, as Gary mentioned, is the displaced businesses. But again, the developer has been terrific in working with them. I would like to urge the city to do its best to keep these businesses in Falls Church. I know the Economic Development Office will work closely with them to help find them new space. Once new space is found, I would like -- I would urge the city to consider easing or expediting permitting that would allow them less time required for their build-outs, less time that they would have to pay two rents while they're in one location and looking to move, and would save them significant money and might help just keep them here. It's an exciting project for Falls Church and one that I hope passes. I know personally, I'm right on the edge of being taxed out of the city, and I think this will help keep me here. So thank you.
Thank you. And good timing, too.
Exactly three minutes, right?
Pam Mahoney.
I have to lower this a little bit. Good evening. I'm Pam Mahoney. I live at 204 Grove Avenue. And also, full disclosure, I teach in Falls Church City Schools. So I've got a -- while I'm one of the newer residents on Grove Avenue, I'm part of the problem. I just moved into the city. But I also, you know, have been in the school system for a very long time, so I've seen the ebbs and flows of things out there. Most of my concerns have to do with traffic, and I know this is not the place for that. But I do want to echo my neighbors' sentiments regarding density of the project and just overall more people there. I participated in the community visioning activity a few summers ago, so I understand the appeal of this project. I understand that this type of development is probably needed for the survival of the city. And I say probably just because I'm not an expert in urban planning, so -- but I understand the appeal of this. I would just ask the city to continue to hear what the neighbors are saying regarding the density. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Stein.
Good evening. I'm Robin Stein. I live at 1001 Lincoln Avenue. And from my back porch, I could throw a baseball, or maybe, maybe I could, maybe Stephen Strasberg could throw a baseball and hit this site. And I'm very worried. I'm very worried about the cars that will be attracted to this thing, by the restaurants, the shopping, the condos, the apartments, the theaters. Pulling all of those vehicles into our little neighborhood is just, I don't think it's a good idea. These streets are already at capacity. If I look out my kitchen window at 5:30, the traffic on Broad Street, the traffic on West Street going to Broad is backed up to the light at Lincoln Avenue. I don't know where these extra 3,000 cars are going to go. Also, when you're talking about that many cars, you're talking about pollution, you're talking about noise, you're talking about the quality of life for the people in the neighborhood. And I just urge you to keep that in mind as you go through this. I'm not against development. Development is good, if it's sane. And I think if we look at the Hilton Garden situation, the entrance to that was very wisely not put on Park Avenue. And what I would suggest is to keep these entrances on Broad Street, keep the commercial traffic on Broad Street. Don't put these entrances on Park Avenue and West Street. Those are single-family homes, and it's not fair to ask the people who live there to contend with the noise, the pollution, the traffic. That is only going to benefit the financial interests of other people. We have a quality of life issue here that I urge you to keep in mind as you go through and consider this process. You know, that's basically it. You know, we're for responsible development, but this is just too big. It's out of scale with the neighborhood, and we hope that it can be cut down to size. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Lipscomb.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Robert Lipscomb, and I'm also at 1001 Lincoln Avenue with my wife, Robin. And the main concerns that I'd like to ask the Planning Commission to keep in mind are -- I think there's a theme here this evening. It's traffic and safety. I've heard several other speakers mention that. I think West Street is already has plenty of traffic. People drive it too fast. It's already dangerous. We have the bike path crossing very close to where this project's going to be. The Developers' Traffic Study says that there's going to be 3,100 new vehicle trips around this every day. And I would say that's at a minimum. One of the few things in the Developers' Traffic Study that I can independently verify is the name of my street, and the study has it wrong. It says we live on Sycamore Street. It's Lincoln Avenue. It has that all wrong. If something like that, that is so basic, is a mistake, I'd just have to wonder what else is wrong with what the traffic projections are going to be. But if you accept those predictions at face value, we're going to have more traffic on West Street, which, as many people have said, is already busy. If you recall, it was only about a year ago, the city was actively considering a traffic calming plan for West Street. That has not happened. But this project, if it is not changed, if it's not reduced, is going to put more traffic on West Street, which I submit is not the solution to the situation we have now. The practical solution, I think, would be to eliminate the vehicle entrance at Park and West. Because one problem, other people have mentioned this as a possibility, is there's going to be cut-through traffic as people, perhaps on Broad Street, think this is backed up. They're going to go cut through the project, go on West, and get around some of the traffic jams that are going to exist already. So eliminating the entrance at Broad and West for vehicles, I think, would be one possible solution to this increased traffic and safety issues. And another thing that I'd just like to point out is the traffic study, and the city, I think, has recommended a traffic light for Broad, for West and Park. With all due respect, I don't think that's going to help the -- address the safety issue of people crossing the bike path at that point. All it's going to take is one person who sees a yellow light. I can make that light. I'm going to make a left turn, and there's somebody right there on the trail. It's fortunate that hasn't happened yet. I'm not saying West Street is safe now. It's already dangerous. But I don't think anything with this project is going to help address that problem. So whatever can be done, whatever the Planning Commission can recommend, to reduce the traffic impacts on West, and I would echo what the people from Park Avenue have said as well. They already get parked up a lot, and this is only going to add to it. So what could ever reduce those impacts, I would ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth K. Patera from 912 Park Avenue. And I've lived at 912 since February 8th, 1969, the day my son was born. I was very happy to see the recommendations that were given by staff. Number one, I support my neighbors for the removal of the condo apartment entrance on Park Avenue. The lights into their living rooms would be oppressive. And also, the traffic coming out onto Park would be a huge increase. I support the decrease of the density of the project and to maintain the residential character of this section of Park Avenue. Selfishly, as one of the residents on Park Avenue without a driveway, I would appreciate any support you can give to the request for permit parking. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much. Paul Barkley.
I'm Paul Barkley, 311 Chestnut Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce. And as you might notice, I'm a resident of the area of this site. The size and location of Mason Row, a site, provides a great opportunity to build a mixed-use project of varying building designs and heights that ring a unique, open courtyard that will provide new opportunities for community uses. I think this is something that's very worthwhile for the city and be something different from what's been presented by other developers. The project's varying facades and building heights along West Street and Park Avenue provide a good transition, in my opinion, as an architect, between the commercial and condo uses of our -- and our existing residential neighborhood across the street. Particularly like the opening between the hotel and the condos that breaks up. You don't have just a continuous building facade at all the same height. The traffic light control at the park and West Street is a well-thought-out plan, in my opinion, and is a reasonable way to control the access to the development and the residential neighborhoods and to provide safety. From an economic standpoint, the project adds substantially to the city's ability to maintain its public services, most especially its high school system, its school system, and hold taxes down. And as a senior citizen, living on fixed income now, this is very important to me, because I've seen the taxes go up very high. And while we can expect some refinements in the project's architectural character over the coming weeks and months, which is evolving now, I believe that the overall size, massing, and variety of uses proposed here are really great for the city of Falls Church. I'm excited about this, and I hope it goes through quickly. Thank you.
Mr. Barkley, I do have a question of you. I noticed that you sent us an email at some point or to the staff or to the Commission talking about the, what's it called? The green space on there?
Market Square.
Market Square?
Right.
And saying that you didn't think that that was sufficient?
Well, because I did not --
Can you expound on that a little bit, since you have a minute?
I did not understand the concept of closing the street to create a large public space there. And I looked at the small space, and especially with the ice rink in there, that didn't leave too much room to move around. And that's the reason that I put that statement. I also was concerned with a continuous building height on Long Broad Street that was all the same and uninterrupted compared to the designs that were shown to us at the other projects in Maryland that showed varying roof styles and heights. Even though the buildings were all the same height, they changed the roof line. So those were the two points I made in that letter.
Right. I just want you to know, we read your letter and were very interested in what you had to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Kleiman.
Do you want to do anything to it?
Kathy, I see at the bottom you ask if you could be the last of the West End neighbors. I don't know if you are or not.
I don't know if I am either.
I've got quite a few after. These look like Park.
It's okay. I'm clear. But thank you for noticing that. Good evening. I'm Kathy Kleiman at 203 Grove Avenue, and I have a cold, so I've got this nice, deep voice. I have actually crossed out most of the speech I was going to give you, because you've heard it from my neighbors, and I won't repeat it. You received the petition that we circulated, and thank you for circulating it. We've talked about, you know, traffic issues, parking issues. Nobody's talked about the strange pork chop here, which we all think needs to be jettisoned, because it will actually intensify traffic and limit the left turns that emergency vehicles make into Grove Avenue and into the West End, ambulances, other things. You've heard about the height, and I request to you not to approve any special exception bonus for residential-facing property. That extra 30 feet, to us, is very dense and belongs on Broad Street. But what I'm going to talk to you about mostly is that we were asked to come here tonight, that this is your public hearing and our public hearing. And I know that changes have been made, but we would passionately ask that you take into account our concerns and considerations. We were asked to put these together. We were asked to put together both concerns and suggestions and recommendations. And I know some of them are outside your bailiwick, but technical bailiwick. But your guidance, your consideration, your advice counts very, very strongly to City Council right now. You're who we've come to. You're who, you know, we're here tonight, and we hope you will take into consideration and pass on. We weren't part of the work sessions, right? We were watching those. But this is it. This is technically the public hearing. And so, to the extent that the comments that you're hearing from the West End, from Park, from steeples, and from others across the city are clarifying, adding to the recommendations and the guidance you'd like to give on a variety of issues, again, including traffic, parking, parking reduction, and this height and density, this 85 feet facing onto Grove, Jennifer Lane, and Park, we would like to ask you to be as explicit as possible, as clear as possible, so that we can get changes and make this a project we can all live with in the end. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kenny Curry.
Hi. 934 West Broad Street. It's Curly.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, LE, okay.
That's good. Three issues, maybe four. First issue, the comprehensive plan of the city of Falls Church, the low residential density issue that's up in front of you, it has to be congruent. And this is something, you're going to go to multi-residential with condominiums, and you really need input within 300 feet. that you really need input within 300 feet of, of that particular area. Otherwise, it's going to be looked at as spot zoning. The second thing, as far as talking to businesses, I own a business at 934 West Broad Street and I think Ms. Cole said that they're reaching out to businesses. I haven't heard anything. Neither has Sun Oil Company. So I will have to disagree with that particular statement. I do know that the 711 next door to Falls Church City, Sunoco, had a petition and for some reason, they had to take down their petition. And right now, we have 276 people on our petition. We've done it for three weeks. So we will continue to do that. And your concern is not the services lost, but I'm sure that each of you individually, you will be losing services that are really required by, by the city. I went through the same process when a bank wanted to come into our city on my site four years, five years ago. And you had enough gumption to tell them to go away because we had too many banks in the city. Now you're going to relegate this city to a situation where every time you need a safety inspection or emissions inspections, they'll have to go somewhere else. And that's going to affect the city, affect the taxes. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up is that you need to revisit, or at least ask your treasurer to revisit, the amount of taxes that is returned to the city from Falls Church City, Sunoco, and the other 17 businesses that are on that site. They say 209,000, clear? I'm sorry, that's wrong, totally wrong. Their, their model that they have for businesses that put nothing into the schools, don't tax or hurt the fire or police department, does not equate with $160,000 reduction from that $209,000 that they say is a paltry sum in your community newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Kim, Kim Callahan.
Hello, my name is Kim Callahan. I live at 918 Park Avenue, which is directly across the street from the proposed development. I'd like to thank staff for their comments. I think they greatly echo a lot of the community concerns, so I appreciate their, their comments. My main concern with this project is that it doesn't tie into the existing community. I mean, they're asking for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning. I feel like that's, that's asking for a lot. So when, when you grant something like that, they need to consider the existing community. And I think putting a, a parking entrance instead of a, a single-family home on Park Avenue is a pretty big departure. That, that parking garage entrance doesn't work visually and it doesn't work functionally. It's, it's going to be mayhem on, on Park Avenue on weekday mornings when school traffic is coming in and, and traffic is already backed up over the length of a football field from that intersection. Nobody's going to be able to get in or out of their driveways. My other concern is the height of the condos along Park Avenue. I think it should be kept to the, the 35-foot height limitation. I haven't seen an updated shadow study from the new development. I have concerns with, with what that's going to look like. I'd also like to ask that the developers potentially proffer to have no construction vehicles along Park Avenue during construction. We're going to be living through two and a half years or so of construction and that's a, that's a lot of construction vehicles going in and out of that site. I also agree with the staff comment of moving the hotel from, you know, where it's facing Grove Avenue to more the corner of, of Broad and West. It seems to be a more appropriate place for the hotel as it relates to the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Novak.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm speaking with sort of three hats on. As a member of the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce's Legislative Committee, as a limited owner in Mad Fox Brewing Company, and as a developer that both appreciates the unique characteristics of the City of Falls Church, but one that also understands the challenges of successful redevelopment. For the record, I have absolutely no direct or indirect financial interest in this project. My concerns tonight are not that the developer will not continue to try to use good faith to address the concerns that we've heard tonight of the neighbors and the city. My concern frankly is that in trying to address the many concerns that have been raised, the project may realistically be rendered financially unfeasible. The reality is, is that a certain level of density is required to make a project economically viable. Land assembling and acquiring land of the nature that's being proposed here is very expensive. The cost of redevelopment and construction is very expensive. Providing affordable housing is very expensive. Paying impact fees and business taxes that essentially go a long ways towards helping subsidize the Falls Church public schools is very expensive. I am absolutely not suggesting that density should be at the expense of public safety. The density should be at the expense of the character of the neighborhoods. Parking and traffic are, are significant issues and I certainly respect the neighbors who have come out with concerns of that. But frankly, density is the only way to economically make projects viable. So in that regard, it is my hope that the neighbors and the citizens of Falls Church and the developer together can view the Western Broad Project, Mason Row, as an opportunity for viable economic development that really is critical to the mutual benefit and future success of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Novak, I do not have an address for you. Could you, you give us an address, please?
I'm sorry. I'm in Chevy Chase, Maryland.
Could I have your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. 7220 Chestnut Street, Chevy Chase, Maryland.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Thurston.
Good evening. My name is Keith Thurston. I live at 1015 Birch Street. And I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of two groups because someone else couldn't show. I'll start first with Catch. Catch is the City of Arts Theater Culture and History. We've met with the developers, had a very good conversation, and we've addressed a letter. Hopefully you got it in your packet.
We did.
And that, we've outlined a number of things that we'd be looking for. And those are the same items that we talked to the developer about. And that was access space for local community access, a kiosk there for finding events in Falls Church like we have in other parts of the city, and performance space off-peak usage and so on. And specifically in development side is, was perhaps ballards for Mason Lane? Yeah. To deal with the issue of pedestrians versus parking. So you have that letter and available, I believe that's available on the Catch site as well. Secondly, I'm speaking on behalf of the Village Preservation Improvement Society. In that vein, I would like to thank the staff for the staff report. We too thought it was very good for this project. Appreciate that having done. The Village Society supports commercial development along our main arteries and has sent a letter with extensive comments of what things has to be addressed on this particular project. First is one is the revenue model that's been mentioned earlier. We too have previously mentioned this on several projects, that the revenue model does not appear to be accurate and in this case is the same. So the calculations on that, especially as it relates to school costs and school children count, that's been brought to the city's attention. In the letters also is the impact on city services for things such as the library. We appreciate the LEED Silver rating that's going to be attempted and would hope that it would go higher. Asking questions about the environmental impact on the rainwater, raised traffic questions, parking questions, and a paragraph entitled, "Respect Park Avenue" because of the impact of what we think is that, been called the, one of the great streets of Falls Church. And how, we think that has to be done in order to, to deal with that. We hope that it will be a Virginia-style architecture that goes on the skin of the building once it gets to that point. It's a paragraph in about affordable housing and we too are raising the issue of the qualification standards not in accordance with the city code for the ADUs, which defeats the purpose somewhat of the city. And the full letter can be found on vps.org. A lot of people ask for us a copy of what we said. It's on the website. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We, we did get your letter and, and it's in our, in our packet. Madeline English.
My name is Madeline English. I live at 315 Grove Avenue and I've been a resident of Falls Church for 60 years. I want to address several things. The pork chop that is supposed to be put at the end of Grove to lessen traffic. I want to talk about the parking and the sewage and the stormwater. The pork chop prevents my turning left on West Street. I would have to go out to Broad as other people would have to do. To come into my street, I would have to, from, from Broad Street onto West, onto Grove, I wouldn't be able to turn into my street. I would have to go up to another street, say for instance Highland, and down and around to go down to my street. And I don't see why, after 60 years, I should have to be restricted as to my entering and leaving my own street. Parking. We're talking about just within this complex, 320 apartment and condos, 85 inner parking spots, 150 for the hotel. That's 555 parking spots plus the retail employees. Now, that's just within the complex itself. Now, you, it's wonderful, you want people to walk there, walk there. There are going to be a few people that are going to walk from close by, but if you're, say six or seven blocks, maybe a little bit more people are going to drive their cars. We're a car-oriented group and that's the way it is. So within the project, you have 555 parking spots and retail employees. Now, you have your, you have your metro line and people walk there, but they are going to have a car. They're not going to, it's not like you're being in Philadelphia in the city or New York where you have no place to park, so you mainly, you don't, mainly don't have a, a car. Now, I think this project is too large for such a small area. They propose, they had proposed 150 inner space parking. Now it's 85. They've got this postage stamp skating rink that's going to bring more people in. More places have to be parked. Why they need a postage stamp parking, I mean skating rink, I have no idea. And in the summertime, their grass will be artificial turf. Also the theater, that's another big project that requires a lot of parking and I don't see any adequate additional parking for that. Also your stormwater and sewage. The present system can't possibly be adequate for, for this building plus all the added buildings that are going up in Broad Street. I foresee a problem that, such as they're having in Hillwood, where there's problems with the backup of sewage. And believe me, sewage runs uphill as well as downhill.
I think as you're almost, you're almost up to your, I was just going to say you're almost up to your time limit. Thank you very much for your remarks. And that is the last speaker's slip. I'll give someone who hasn't given me one, one more chance. Seeing no hands, we'll close the meeting to the public and move on to commissioners' Any comments down on that end?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I'm looking, oh, just, just a comment. I'm looking forward to us having the work session as I recommended earlier because I think it would be really helpful to have that prior to meeting with the City Council.
Okay, thank you. Lyndy? Okay. Rob?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have clarity. We had clarity after the last public hearing. I think we had clarity when we did the walking tour of the site. I think we had clarity when we did the first, what seemed interminable, meeting with the City Council on this. I think there's really no need for us to go to the November 3rd meeting. I think we need another work session. We have the same issues to be addressed. I think the general public have the same issues to be addressed. We're, I was sort of looking forward to the issues being addressed, but we're sort of where we were before, which is frustrating, so.
Thank you. Melissa.
Yeah, I just want to say that the seven points that the staff put in the, the motion to continue, you know, I, I didn't, I wasn't here for the work session we had because I was on a business trip, but I do agree with all seven of those points. And I do agree with a lot of the neighbors out here that maybe the densities are just a little bit too big for this location. Generally, I've been favorable to this project since, I think the first time I heard about it was like three and a half years ago maybe, or three years. It was a long time ago. And, but I do feel like it's changed a lot in concept, just it continuously changes. And as it currently is, I'm not totally, I mean, I just do feel like the density and the height has gotten a lot larger than, it just seems to grow and grow. And I do have an issue with that Market Square. I, I look at it when we had the nice graphic up there and it just looks like you're going to go through these gateways and it's just large space inside there. It really isn't that large. And we kind of had that happen with the, at, you know, where Mad Fox is. We had drawings of that plaza being this big plaza, but it really isn't this big plaza, although Mad Fox has been able to use it pretty well for their festivals. So I'm not saying it isn't a useful space. I'm just not, I almost feel like I would rather see the opening more to the outside of the project. I think anytime you have something inside, people aren't going to feel as comfortable going into it. But, I mean, since we're still in flux on design, I guess we'll have, we may have more questions later.
Russ?
Well, I want to thank everybody for their public comments. I took a great deal of notes and the perspective from the residents is invaluable. And I will push, along with the other commissioners, to get a lot of these at least heard and discussed at great length, even though there are some practical realities that we've seen through our work sessions, that many of these will not be able to be accommodated. Some of them are not within our bailiwick for sure about traffic and signage and permitting. Those are, there are other avenues and those are great solutions, but they, they're not for the planning commission. I've said a couple of times in, in many of these meetings publicly that I am for this development and I continue to be for it. I think that the land usage as it currently exists right now is inadequate for its location in the city. I think that the developers made many changes over the time that we've met with them and most of them are positive and all with the joint goal of making it workable for everybody and to make it economically feasible. I think the tax revenue that will be added by a project of this nature will be beneficial to the city. And that is a major consideration to me, that I would not like to see this project go away because of the wrong entrance or the density issues. That doesn't mean that we're not going to try to correct those issues or try to discuss them at least at length. I want to hear the I want to hear the developers' explanations, and press them on those issues. Again, I took a lot of notes, and they're really, really helpful. But as a general concept, I am pushing to get this project through, but just in a way that can meet as many people's needs as possible.
Thank you, Russ. Andy?
Yeah, I have a few comments. First of all, I think, as I said on the first time I made any kind of meeting where I got to talk, there's this density issue. The developers made it clear that they won't build something less dense. Some of us have, not me, but others have made it clear that they won't approve anything that's this dense. So, I don't know, I'd love for us to address that at some point. But I do think that whenever we ask for something less dense, we need to make sure that the, you know, one of the big sheets in here is the financials, both ongoing net revenue and the initial capital contributions to the schools. We need to, anytime we talk about less density, have that number updated, because that's going to drastically change. So, it's not just the developers' financials that change when the density changes, it's the city's financials, and we can't lose sight of that. We can't have a smaller project that generates the same amount of taxes and initial contributions for school construction. So I don't necessarily agree that this is too dense. It's similar density, if not a little less dense than some of the recently approved projects in town. So, I know a lot of people have that concern, and we should address it, like I've been saying from the beginning, but I personally am not too worried about it. I do worry about the height along Park, because that is a small residential street. I think as you transition from Park to West and Broad, the residences are a little bit farther away. It's not as big of a concern, obviously, as it is to many of you here, but to me, it seems more reasonable. So, that's something I look at, is the condo height right there on Park, where the current single-family homes are, that would be replaced by this. The entrance there, we've talked about the reasons for that. I'd love to see something done there, because I do think that's a pretty big burden on the immediate residents to have the cars coming and going. I think it's relatively smart to have that on Park for the use, but I don't, you know, it'd be nice to think of some way to shield that, or somehow deal with it. I do think a huge flaw in the design is that little six parking spaces coming off of West Street, where the 7-Eleven is, is going to be something where we regret forever. People are going to pull in there, there's not going to be empty parking spaces, I guess they're going to back out onto Park, they're going to get into accidents every day. I understand a little bit why that's there, I just, it's a huge mistake. Got to figure out a way to get rid of that. A lot of people here have talked about restricting access to Grove, parking limitations on Grove and Park. I guess that's not our purview. I don't, no one has come to speak against that. I mean, I assume that's what the CACT has, is a process to, so if anybody's against that, they can come talk. I don't know if they're, I know the CACT is underfunded and overburdened, but I would encourage the powers that be, whoever they might be, to jumpstart that, because it sounds great to me. I don't drive over there very often, it doesn't matter to me. I assume some people would oppose it. I'd like to hear both sides. So far, everyone that we've heard from thinks it's a great idea, so it sounded great to me. I'd love to get that going, because I think if somehow we got some resolution, or at least some direction on that, a lot of people will be more comfortable with that aspect. And then, just another thing in here, I personally think the parking at the site is probably okay, especially if you get some parking, restricted parking on Park and Grove, maybe. So, in terms of the seven bullets here, I'm not too worried about that. And I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Russ?
As the liaison to the CACT, I don't believe they deal with the permitting part of it. They definitely deal with the traffic calming portion, but Mr. Snyder, for the permit stuff, I think that's directly to, yeah, the restricted access part, I think that's directly to the city, correct?
The city manager's office.
City manager's office.
Yes, that would be a broader topic, city manager's office. I mean, I think one of the things we're hearing in this public hearing is the consistent concern about what's, how should Grove Avenue be treated? How is that crossing of the trail treated? And the impact of parking on existing residents on Park? So, we have a good list of things that we can try to work on as we hear more about how the project is being designed, and designs are being changed.
Also, Russ, we did get a letter from the CACT, but the gist of the letter was, they can't comment because they didn't have all the information.
Right.
So, they generally send us a very thoughtful, concise comments with their concerns in it, but we haven't gotten it yet, so.
Yeah.
That will be coming, I'm sure.
Madam Chair, can I chime in now? After hearing everybody else speak, I just want to reiterate and say to the developers that this is the second time we've heard exactly the same type of concerns. And as Rob said earlier, this, you know, these concerns were spoken to, what, two, three weeks ago even. So, going into the city council, I think developers have a pretty darn good idea of the concerns of the citizens, and the concerns of the planning commissioners. And I, for one, am looking forward very much, because I do like the project. I'm looking forward to seeing how these concerns can be met, and looking forward to something, you know, we've just started on reviewing this project, and it's going to change again. So I'm looking forward to seeing those changes, and see what will happen in the future.
Thank you, Lyndi. I too have been to many, many meetings on this, and heard all the concerns of the community and the different boards and commissions. It seems to me that the preponderance of evidences is that there are serious problems that the community and boards and commissions would like to have addressed. So I'm looking forward to at least seeing some proposals from the developer, which I'm sure you're working on, so. But they're not, it's not there yet, as far as I'm concerned. I have quite a few very serious problems with the project as it stands, and I'd like to see those things addressed. We will, we will be, I hope, I hope, Gary, that if we go to the city council work session on Wednesday, if we have other comments that we want them to consider, we can still do that, other than your seven. My concern is that these seven things are very good, but they're not our only concern. I mean, they're not my only concern, so I'm assuming that there are other things out there that the commissioners would like to have addressed.
I mean, the staff report, the comments from the public, all the different divisions, the neighborhoods, board and commissions, all those are attached, and the, after your staff report went out, we did a comprehensive list of every single comment from all those groups at 100%, distilled them down into some summary statements, so they're provided in both formats. And then we distilled them down to the city council, so they can, you know, have some broad objectives with some specific strategies and actionable items. And so they've got a report that was done after your report was finished, that reflects that, that they'll be looking at in the work session, but obviously a very short work session. So that was refined down to allow them the opportunity potentially to sort of give guidance. But I see that entire package with all of those comments, individually, grouped, as the guidance. I mean, just because we've narrowed it down to seven, we've just focused on some highlights, but that's by no means the comprehensive comments that we package for the council, for example. That's a great package, and so.
And have they gotten that now?
That went out Friday to the council for their Wednesday meeting, and it's available on the website.
Well, so specifically, like with, an issue that came up tonight was on ADUs, and that is not on your list of seven, so that is on another list?
Well, what I'm trying to say is the, is the whole report is the list. That's just some highlights. Those are some particular things that the planning staff was having, you know, they were sort of our highlights, but they're by no means comprehensive in terms of all the issues. The report with all the attachments, you know, represent all the issues at hand, and, you know, that was an attempt just to highlight some things that we wanted to focus on, but it's not a comprehensive list even from staff. And I think if you look at the council report, that attempts to do that, and it actually suggests the developer do certain things. It goes beyond just listing out objectives and issues that we still have, so.
So if we wanted to have specific concerns that we wanted the council to consider, on top of these seven, should we write them down and send a letter to the city council ourselves, or do we need to, can we only speak as the commission?
Well, I mean, you're going to get a, you know, a development plan that's going to have changed, you know, for your next meeting, you'll actually have a final version to deal with. Right now, it's in flux. So, you know, I think a lot of the core pieces of the plan, you know, the comments we have will carry forward, and the developer will be looking at those carefully, and revising their plans accordingly, and we'll see the results of that, and then we'll have a technical review of that, and we'll see where we are. You know, number seven of my comments was, you know, city council, board, commission, community organization, public, and staff comments should be carefully reviewed, considered, and responded to as appropriate by the applicant. So, you know, I've basically said, you know, we've got all these relevant comments out there, and I'm not even trying to narrow them down to just seven from us. You know, all of these comments are pertinent to this project. I've tried to key on some highlights on some things that I really wanted to press on, and, you know, I've got this catchall number seven. You could cite that and say, you know, we had a couple items that we particularly wanted to highlight, and that's sort of what I've attempted to do, and you could couch it like that, and I think that would be a good way to, you know, comment, because you, you know, the last thing we want to do is act like, you know, we're doing, you know, final comments tonight to the council, and they think we've taken action. No. The motion is, is we're deferring this council until we get a plan in final form, and, you know, there's a lot of important issues to deal with, and we concur with those. And, you know, if you happen to have a few pet ones that you want to highlight, then, you know, there's an opportunity to do that, not necessarily even tonight, but between now and Wednesday. If you to provide something to staff, we'll see that it gets copied and, you know, available to the council, and it can also be emailed to them, and so they'll have that, and, you know. And whether the council can come out of the work session on Wednesday and have, you know, some final guidance to the developer, based on this full package they've gotten, you know, that's their, you know, something that they'll be working on on Wednesday. And whether it takes more time, and there may be more time to comment. So we'll see how that unfolds. That's the long answer.
Okay, well, one of the things I did, as I was reading this, was to note the things that were cited by the different boards and commissions, and by different citizens, that I felt strongly about, and that I agreed with. So I think that I probably will be sending something in, supporting certain issues that have come up.
I mean, if the planning commission would like, you could email those to myself and Akita, or to me, and I'll see that Akita gets them, and we could compile whatever comes in between now and Wednesday, and see that the council gets that list. If you would send that in a Word document, where we could easily cut and paste, you know. So, I mean, that's an option for you, if you feel like you need to comment. You know, but at this point, you know, you may want to allude to, you know, your disposition with the deferral, so.
Okay, and of course, all the commissioners are welcome to do the same, if you have specific things, such as the ADUs or whatever.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just feel like there, we are put in a position to sending it to city council, when there's so much work to do, and I feel we're being challenged by dates and time. And I don't feel, I just don't feel comfortable with it, because I really wish that we could see more of the plan that would be based on a lot of these comments, so that we could really work on substantial things, and then send it forth to council. I just feel.
So are you suggesting that maybe we just send to city council that we are continuing it, and that our comments will come later, and don't even say these seven comments? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think the seven comments is a good place to start, but there is, I just see that there's such a lot of work to be done on this, and I just wish it weren't going to the city council at this point. Rob?
I don't know why it's going to the city council, and.
Well, it's not going.
I mean that, no, 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 but you know, they're having a meeting Wednesday to go to the city council. So let me, I mean, it's almost as if, and maybe I'm being paranoid, feel free to tell me if you think I am.
Oh, no.
But, I mean, it's almost as if, I mean, like, we're meeting with the city council in order to get this thing moving further along, and I will tell you, just if we go to item four, which is the detailed parking reductions by type and use, and how parking spaces will be managed effectively, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a big deal for me. That's not, I mean, it's almost as if it's going to the city council, and we're going to then somehow agree with whatever the city council has, and I don't really know that the city council is going to look at the detailed parking reductions and a parking plan.
Well, they know, because that's our site plan, that's not their job.
And I just take that as one specific example. We could go through here and spend 15 minutes. I don't know why it's going to the city council at this point. I'm not sure I'm following the process.
Well, so would you feel comfortable dropping the, these seven points, and just saying that we're continuing this, because it's not finished, and?
Yes.
It's your motion.
Well, I think that's the way I think it should be, but I, but I wasn't trying to be funny. I mean, maybe I'm.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Oh, I agree with you.
Bob?
No, I agree with you. I think we should continue it like we've always continued projects, which is, it's not in its final form.
It's just not ready.
Therefore, we have to continue it.
You know, I would like to request that the city council also drop this from their agenda when they meet on Wednesday, because I don't think it's, if we are supposed to be providing guidance.
And we're not.
And we're not. So.
If I might, Madam Chair, I think one of the important things that has happened here is, you've had the public hearing, and you've heard from the public. Lots of people came out, they talked in detail about the issues. We will be trying to put all those together. That collection of input is something that council will not be hearing Wednesday night, because they're having a work session, not a public hearing. So I think one of the most important things about this evening is that you've had a public hearing, heard from the public. And so I think, you know, that can be clearly conveyed. Here's what we heard. Here are things we, you know, we agree with, and we can try to organize those comments by themes as well, I think. But I think, you know, we heard a lot from the public, very consistently, things in favor, and also things that need working on. So I think that's probably the most valuable thing for the council to be able to understand.
So do I, am I hearing you correctly, Mr. Snyder, that the city council is not going to take this up on Wednesday, simply because?
It is on their agenda, and they will be taking it up on Wednesday.
In a work session.
In a work session. It's a work session, not a public hearing. They have other items as well, but they, I think they, they've definitely got it scheduled to talk about. So having the planning commission hearing in advance of that, I think has been very valuable, and should be valuable to the council as well.
But, Madam Chair.
Yes.
But that is exactly what I'm concerned about. We have had the public hearing. We are now sending this forward to council for their opinions and their.
No, we're not doing that. What we're doing is saying, we've held a public hearing, and because we don't have all the information.
I didn't state it right, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to continue it.
But they're going to go ahead and make suggestions without even having heard any public hearing.
Well, they're going to have all the comments that have been written.
They always listen to our entire meetings before they.
But not for Wednesday.
I mean, they're watching now, as we speak.
So, I just want to point out that while I'm offer informing city council of what we think, I mean, to me, I guess on November 17th, which isn't that far from now, the the developer's gonna come back with a plan. And as far as I'm concerned, if it doesn't address all the stuff we've talked about today, I'm not gonna vote for it. So to me, I don't, I guess it's important to get our concerns in front of the city council, but I mean, most, hopefully the developers have heard our concerns. And my concern, like Quafo mentioned, is between now and November seventeenth, it seems to me like a lot of stuff has to get figured out. And I just can't imagine just coming to a meeting on November seventeenth and voting on this because we have a bunch of questions. I've raised things and I don't like we gave them opportunity to respond. So if they, if we come back November seventeenth and they're like, yeah, that six parking space thing, we're just gonna keep it, and I don't have any back and forth, it's gonna be real hard. So I'm less concerned about what city council finds out and more concerned about when our next step is to actually get some response, see what can or can't change so that I can have some kind of think about it. Before November seventeenth, when we actually have to vote on it, right?
I agree with that.
Okay.
Has the developer seen this proposed motion with these seven items?
We've
In our package?
We've read through the staff report, and I believe there's a section that has those comments.
Okay, so it sounds like we're gonna make a motion that doesn't have these seven, but I would advise that you pay close attention to those as seven as highlights, and there'll be more based on the public comments that you heard this evening.
Well, yes, we're, we're listening.
We, we know you are.
We've been visiting folks and taking seriously the, the comments that you heard tonight. And there's been a lot of constructive comments coming from our neighbors, and we appreciate their constructive approach. And we want them to know and you to know that we're listening. And this is a complex project, as you can imagine, and we have a lot of work to do to get it right. And part of getting it right is doing some redesigns to address the problems we heard tonight. We, believe me, we have a lot of ideas on how to do that. You know, we're not, it's not realistic to think that we're gonna solve everything a hundred percent. But I think we can make a big dent into the issues and concerns that we heard tonight. And we're, we are definitely focused and dedicated to work hard to do that.
Well, that's our hope, so.
Well, so I'm gonna make a motion. I would just add to that. The concern I think that we have, my last paranoid self, is that there will be issues that may come up with the city council. Parking would be a huge one, which you may not get as clear a picture as I think we are by, by code required to look at. So the city council may sort of generally say, yeah, it looks like it's okay. And it's just gonna need to be a little bit more.
I know where you're coming from, and as far as some additional meetings with you before November seventeenth, I, I would push our group to get with you and, like we did before.
Great.
With the new designs and, and everybody get on the same page. We understand your, your concerns and comments about the new design, and we, we do the work together to get the project where it needs to be before November seventeenth.
Okay.
Good.
I move that the planning commission continue the public hearing on resolution TR-14-29 and TR-14-28 and ordinance T-014-28 until November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen for final consideration, action, and recommendation to the city council. As the current application plans and supporting documents presented are not in final form or not scheduled for further revisions and changes that may be substantial and substantive.
I think that you've had one too many knots in there. You said they're not in final, final form and are not scheduled.
And are scheduled.
And are scheduled, okay.
Thank you very much.
We don't wanna cancel out the, oh, I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
Or somebody will.
Andy, did you second?
Oh, okay.
Russ seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue the public hearing on resolutions TR-1429, TR-1428, and ordinance TO-14-28 until November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Akita, would you mind calling the rule, please?
Sure. Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teats?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to the public for coming out and speaking up. That's a really important part of our consideration and, and will be as, as we move along through further discussions with the developer.
Absolutely.
And thank you for coming. We appreciate, we appreciate all the meetings you're going to. Oh, I guess I have a rest of agenda to go to.
I thought that much.
Yeah. We'll move on to approval of the minutes, the minutes for September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Has everyone had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Nope. Move.
Do I have a motion?
No, I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and, and seconded to approve the minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And I abstain.
And Melissa abstains. Are there any planning commission reports?
I wouldn't dare.
I, I do think, I do think that one of the things that would have been good to talk about was the tree commission letter before we, before we had to decide what we were gonna do with, with Kensington. So that might be a, an item for another discussion. Mr. Snyder, don't, don't you think we need to at least be able to recommend what it is we'd like to do?
I think so, and it's in the larger context of the streetscape updates that we've been talking about with the commission and that Commissioner John had raised.
Right.
And so we, we have done work on that. We need to find time to have a, we need to have a work session on it.
Also, it seems to me that many on the council are pushing for the, the flat streetscape too. So, I mean, we may as well find out what everybody wants so that we're not doing each one piecemeal.
Yeah, and I should clarify, I don't, I mostly would ask the tree commission, experts on trees, what options there are for flat. I'm not just like, hey, look at that flat, even it kills all the trees.
Yeah.
I've just seen flat ones.
Yeah.
And their letter didn't suggest there are any flat options and that
And the reason that they want the bullnose were, were good too.
Yeah, those are good reasons, but
I mean, if you keep water in there, you're, so
If that's the only way to keep the trees alive, then you gotta do it.
Kinda torn.
I also got the feeling that they thought it would protect it from being hit by things like, you know.
Like those strollers you're wheeling, Andy.
Yeah, might kill the strollers. I'm gonna go kick the trees every time I go by.
All right, so if there are no further commission reports, Mr. Snyder, do you have a, a planning director's report?
Yes, wanted to mention, we remind people we are working on the technical assistance panel that's going to be held on October fifteenth and sixteenth. That's the ULI project along with COG, looking at the new property, schools property up near West Falls Church Metro. That will be held at the Hilton Garden Inn, so fifteenth and sixteenth. That's gonna be a, a big event. On the twentieth of October coming up, I believe Mount Daniel School presentation by the school's staff to give the commission an update on where that is. Also, we're hoping to have a presentation in a work session format from the Virginia Society of the AIA, their emerging leaders group that you met, some of you met with way back when. They're finishing up their program. Actually, their last session is gonna be this coming Friday. They're still working out the details of that, but it, it looks like it may well be also at, at the Hilton Garden Inn. That's gonna be an all-day session where they're gonna talk about community advocacy, and we hope to get a preview of their, of their project. So that's, that's going forward. So a lot of activity here. We also provided some information in your package about the, the library expansion plan, so I wanted to just bring that to your attention as well. And of course, it's been a very busy, busy period for staff. Our clerk, Deborah G., as you may know, had some surgery and is recovering from that, so we are, we're trying to fill her shoes and take care of the things she takes care of so efficiently.
Well, we know that's impossible.
So I wanted to thank all the staff who are helping do that. As you see, it takes many of us and only one of Deborah, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
So wait a minute, I just want, I just, I just wanna say, if Deborah's watching, we're thinking of you, Deborah, and we hope you're feeling better every day.
Guys, I hope you're not watching.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, I have, I have just one thing to
Yes.
To ask of the, of the planning director. We have, we're having issues on Hillwood Avenue with the construction traffic from Avalon Bay.
Yeah.
And I like that to be looked into. We've had a lot of construction dirt on the street. I think the last rain washed it, but I see it coming back. Neighbors have been complaining, so I'd like you to take a look at that for us.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And direct, direct the traffic to fifty rather than them coming off of Anandale to Hillwood Avenue.
We will speak with the Public Works Department and also be in contact with Fairfax County. I think that's an excellent suggestion. We really don't need construction traffic going through Hillwood Avenue, so we'll see what we can do, get the right people aware of the problem and, and doing something about it. Thank you for passing it on to us.
Are these, are these big trucks that you're, I, I don't think they can go on Route fifty.
That's what I was just saying, they can't go on Route fifty.
They can't, no, they can't go on Route fifty, so we'll have to think of something else.
Madam Chair, point of privilege?
Yes.
I'd like to invite you all to see the great new flashing yellow light at, at Pennsylvanian Broad Street.
I was confusing the heck out of people today.
Oh, Lyndi, I'm surprised you didn't have a party there.
People are stopping at the yellow light. It's dangerous.
Well, I stopped there this morning to applaud the, the workers.
Yes.
Are they gonna turn, make it a real light soon?
I'm sure Mr. Wodisca had to take an extra three seconds to get here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I noticed that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.